Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back. It is Tuesday, August 2nd at 5:00. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the St. Croix County Board of Supervisors. This has been a little bit of a long day. Just a reminder, there are some refreshments and sandwiches over there to make sure we don't go hungry. So, we're fortunate to have back with us for our invocation, Tim Sackett. Tim, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. In case anybody thinks I'm here too often, I just want to let you know that I work with the other pastors to be here, but it is summertime. And tonight, I am the fourth-string pastor that came tonight. The other three went down the line and not available or wouldn't work out, but that's good. I appreciate always being here. My thoughts about why we do this and why are we here? Why are you here? Why am I here? Why is the clergy here? And I guess the question could be answered with another question, and that is, do we want to please God? Because the Bible says that here's something that pleases God. It's about praying for our leaders. Pray for the people in authority. For us, in our society, we pray before we elect them, and we pray for them after they're elected, even if they're not our choice. That's how our society is established, with the kind of liberty and freedom and voting and representing that we have. But the Scripture actually says that requests, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for everyone, for rulers and all those in authority, that we collectively may live quiet and peaceable lives in all godliness and holiness. And Paul wraps it up by saying, "This is good and pleases God, our Savior." So that's why we do what we do. We've been doing it since the founding of this country. And even in the colonial days, government and representatives were prayed for and lifted up in prayer. And certainly, right now, our county needs a lifting of prayer, especially right now with the tragedy in Somerset and the difficult job for our enforcement people, courts, and shared departments. And I think it's kind of odd to say that we should pray for them, our enforcement departments, because of this difficult time that they're having. But then I think, if I talk to them, they'd probably say, "Every day is difficult, not just this one." It's constantly difficult to be in that position, to watch over our society and chase down and chase after and go after the ones that need to go after and protect the ones that need to be protected. So I think every day is a difficult day in many of our lives. I'm reminded, I read a long time ago, a book on the Navy SEALs, and one of the models the Navy SEALs has, they say that the only easy day you'll ever have was yesterday. They just get more difficult. And it certainly seems like that as a whole, collectively around the country. It's difficult to read a newspaper and not tear that newspaper to pieces over what we read. It's not easy right now. It's pretty difficult to watch and listen and see what's happening all around us. And so, we pray for all of this peaceableness that the Apostle Paul wrote about. We want to pray about the quietness that we ask for to surround us. And so, I'm going to lift that up today in prayer. Lord God in heaven, you're the one who has established the terms of what it means to be a society of peace. It comes from you. You've established what it means to have justice and equity and freedom and righteousness. And even in this phrase from 1 Timothy, that we should have godliness and holiness in our lives because of the people who represent us, the people we work with, the people we work for. So we ask, Lord, from the very top all the way down, I ask for every government agency, I ask for every church, every family, every school, everything that our lives touch and everything that touches our lives. We pray and lift them up with an intercession, with prayers, and with requests. And to wrap it all up by giving thanks, Lord, we thank you for the people that are here. We thank you for the difficult job that they have and that they have chosen to be here and that they are determined people, determined to see where and how our county can benefit from their service. So we lift them up today in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for our roll call, we're missing some of our favorite technology tonight, so it appears that we're only missing Supervisor Otino, who's excused. Supervisor Cook is joining us via Zoom. Public comment, we will start out with Mr. Schober, who will give us a CASA update. Roy, welcome back.
Thank you. So what a nice shirt, huh? This is a CASA shirt. And we're so excited at CASA because one of our goals is to flood this area with volunteers, each volunteer being assigned by the court to oversee an abused or neglected child and give the court monthly reports about how the child is doing. So we supplement the overworked social workers. We supplement all that they're doing so well. And so, I'm pleased to say this, that we, last year, or I guess back in March, we swore in two volunteers, and right now, we have seven more in training, seven. So that's a good number. One of them is myself, so I'm right now skipping out of school because it runs from 5:00 to 8:00, so I use this as a good excuse. But visit our website, casasntcroix.org, and invite those people that you know, most likely former teachers, who are looking for their kid fix, if you will. And this gives them their opportunity to use all of their training and education to the good of what our county's trying to do for these kids. So that's the good news. And I'm also wishing to greet you all on behalf of our new executive director, Sean Consala. He's doing an excellent job. He's already met with a number of you, and he wants to meet with each of you. So I hope you give him the opportunity to meet with you one-on-one when he calls you. Lastly, I'm pleased that you found your way to support the Sheriff's Department with the addition of a mental health worker for those that are incarcerated. That's a good use of funds that came your way. And I would just like to suggest this, that CASA programs throughout the United States, on the average, on the average, receive revenue support of about 60% of their budget from the county. Okay. Right now, we're receiving zero in your budget. So I thought of this, we cannot neglect our neglected children. And so, please have it in your hearts and minds that as you review the budget for this next coming year, that somehow, we can count these kids as part of who we are taking care of, in addition to their parents while their parents are incarcerated. So I'll leave it with that. And again, please, visit us on our website. Sean Consala is doing a great job there. Visit him. He's upstairs next to the probate office. Just knock on his door, and he'll say hello. Thanks again.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to comment this evening? Any public comment? Don't be shy. Public comment? Okay, well, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Supervisor Adams, second. Supervisor Counter. And I think what we will do is a voice vote on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. And we're going to move on to the county administrator's report.
Yeah, thank you. So the first thing, and it's going to take me just a minute to get to that section. So the first... Yep. So the first thing that I wanted to talk with the county board this evening about was an update on the Government Center project. So I put into the packet a page that shows our current fiscal estimates. So the main thing to point out is that the project, you know, from the time that we originally planned it and set the bonding amount for it, cost have increased. So it's come in higher than what we've currently bonded for. So we've done a number of things to reduce the scope of the project, back down to get it close to the amount that we have budgeted. We have $80 million that we borrowed. We've gotten, by reducing the scope, we've gotten it back down to about $86 million. So we're still $6 million over. So one of the reasons I wanted to tell you about that, it's related to a later agenda item. It'll be the first resolution that we get to under the business tonight. So we have a mechanism that I've put into place that will address this potential cost overrun. So right now, these are still just cost estimates, the same as we had had before we did the bonding. It's just with more detail behind the cost estimates. In November, the first bid package will go out on this project, and the second and last bid project will go out on this project in February. So we will know what the actual bids are by the end of February. So we'll have a lot better idea what the actual cost on the project is, of whether it's $80 million or $86 million, or anywhere above or below that range. So I just wanted to paint that picture for you and let you know, it's an issue. We're dealing with it. We have some solutions lined up to address it. And February is when I'll know a whole lot more information, and we can go on from there. So are there any questions, though, about the costs that we provided, or any of the changes to the scope of the project that we've made to get us to where we are today?
Supervisor Van Summer.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a question to you, Ken Director, towards you. Are we okay with that? If it's $6 million, is there money available to cover that $6 million? Or are we looking at cutting other things? What's your plan?
If you approve the resolution under Business Item Number One, I will have the $6 million available to cover that. All right. So if there's no other questions on that, I just wanted to make sure that you guys were kept informed of these changes. The subcommittees reviewed all this. You know, they went through in detail the scope of the project that was cut down. So they've been through it. Those that are on that subcommittee have seen a lot more details, but now the rest of you are informed, too, so. The next part of my report, then, is just the monthly financial report. This is through June. We're midway through the year. And as the chairman always asks me, is there any red flags that I need to tell him about? And no, the answer's no, again, Chairman Long. But if there are any questions on the financial report, I'd be happy to answer them. St. Croix County is fortunate to have really good department heads that maintain their expenses and stay within budget, and we have strong economic growth and sales tax growth in the county that continues to bolster the revenue side for us. So I do not have any concerns with where we are midway through the year.
Any questions? Questions? Anyone? You answered my question. Thank you. Okay, seeing none, let's move on to our first business item, very closely related, Resolution Allocating the ARPA Funding. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Supervisor Austinis, second. Supervisor Counter. I'll turn this back over to Administrator Witt for more...
Supervisor Counter.
Or unless you'd like to take this Supervisor Counter.
Yeah, either way, Supervisor Counter, if you wanted to address it, and I can fill in any details afterwards.
I'll fill in reverse.
Okay.
Point of inquiry?
Yes.
What motion, what's the motion that we're discussing?
Yep. It's a motion to approve Resolution 28, Resolution Allocating ARPA Funded. All right. So this resolution is related to the ARPA funds that we received. So we received that second tranche of money in May of this year, and we had largely held off on how we were going to spend most of the second half of the money. So we had about $7.5 million that was just unallocated. We hadn't determined what we were going to do with it. So there's a lot of different uses that you could do with it, and there's some things that you can't do with it. But my recommendation to the Administration Committee was that we allocate the $7.5 million to the KIP. So you're going to hear me say this a lot over your entire term as a county board supervisor. Any excess money that the county ends up with, I always recommend that it goes into the KIP. There's two really good reasons for that. One is, the KIP doesn't have another funding source other than a bond issue. So if we can avoid issuing debt, we're saving the taxpayers' bond issuance costs, and we're saving them interest. So any excess cash is best used to avoid debt issuance. So that's the number-one use that we have for any extra funds that we have. So that's the reason, though, that I've recommended that this $7.5 million be moved over there, is we have projects, we just went over at the Committee of the Hall, all of the projects that are out there. And I had shown you the bottom line of that that was negative. So we need more cash influx in order to keep that solvent and avoid debt issuance. And then, secondly, is the project that I brought up under my report for the month, updating you on the Government Center. The Government Center's current cost estimates could potentially put us $6 million over. The Government Center is a KIP project. So if you put an additional $7.5 million into the KIP, and I have a cost overrun of $6 million, now I have a place where those funds are coming from. And so, it's serving two purposes. One is, it provides me an immediate cushion. We can continue to move forward on the Government Center with the current scope, because I will have the cash to pay for it if necessary. And two, if the bids come in really well and we stay within the $80 million we originally projected, I still have that money in the KIP that I can pay for all those other projects that are on there. We can move up, you know, projects like the fire suppression for the Baldwin. We can move that project up because the cash is there, it's available. All right, so let's pull that project up and get that done sooner rather than later. So those are the reasons why I've recommended the allocation of the ARPA dollars into the
Questions? Supervisor Feeder.
Just a question for the administrator. You mentioned that we would put the money into the KIP, and it could be used for other KIP projects. The board can also take money out of the KIP to use for other projects as well. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. The only fund that's 100% restricted, it's a black hole, it only goes in one way, is the Debt Service Fund. If you've put money into the Debt Service Fund, you can't take the money back out of the Debt Service Fund. All the other funds that the county has, we can put this money into the KIP, but next month or next year, you can say, "Well, there's too much money in there. I have a different project I want. I want to pull that money back out." You have the ability to do that. It is a two-way street with the KIP fund.
Other questions? Supervisor Austinis.
Ken, with this being the second half of the ARPA money, the first half, we use that for some employees, am I correct on that? And that their salaries are covered through the end of 2024. This won't affect them at all. Am I correct on that?
Correct. Most of the positions that we had, we funded for the full three years of the ARPA expenditure period. So it was 2022, 2023, and 2024. There's two positions within the Justice Support Services that we had only funded for two years, of '22 and '23, but all the other ones were funded for three years.
Other questions, discussion, concerns? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Based on the comments, I think a voice vote would suffice. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next business item is the next resolution, amending personnel policies. I believe there are two of them. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Supervisor Austinis, second. Someone from the Administration Committee? Thank you. Who would like to describe these policies?
Yeah, same deal, Supervisor Counter. Actually, we have our HR Director here, and she'd probably be better yet to give you just a really brief overview of which policies we are looking at. HR Director Hecraft?
Thank you. I didn't know you were going to do that. So we have, we looked at our overtime and compensatory time policy. This was really just based off of WRS rules stating that compensatory time does need to be paid out in the same year that it is earned. So we need to basically change that language to do that payout policy. If you carry it over into another year, you do get fined and have to pay penalties through WRS. So I thought that it was better well-served to just avoid those fines and update the policy language on that one. And the other one is the breastfeeding support policy. We just added a section on employee responsibilities that wasn't previous in the policy. Any questions?
Supervisor Van Summer.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sorry, I'm trying to eat at the same time.
Just a question. So how about the people who have, who have not been paid for their time? Will they be paid for it, or will that be, you know, will they be paid for it this year? It's like, okay, we're going to pay for it by next Friday, or whatever it might be? Or do they lose that? I guess that's my question.
At the end of the year, it'll be paid out. Yep, so no one will lose anything. Yeah, so every December, we'll have a payout of it instead of rolling it over.
Other questions? Seeing none, I think we're ready to vote. Let's try a voice vote on this one as well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, our next business item is establishing the library levy. We have a motion to approve this resolution. Supervisor...
Library levy?
Supervisor Burning, second. Supervisor Hanson. Would you like to take this one, too?
Let me get caught up to the packet page here for you. So this library levy, despite all the discussion that you've heard about library agreements, is really the base amounts. So this is in consideration that the Hudson Joint Library stays as-is and the four members are exempt. We can update this resolution if something changes with that. We can update this resolution if an agreement with the Hudson Joint Area Library is agreed upon by the county, and we have to update the numbers. So this resolution, though, is basically, the base amount would also be the highest dollar amount, which I'll get back to in a sec, for approval. So if everything stays the same, this will just carry through and will be the resolution. We approve this, and we have to approve this fairly early in the summer, because the other municipalities that have a library, New Richmond and River Falls and Deer Park and all them, they have to levy at least the same rate that the county is levying in order to be exempt from the county's rural library tax. So we have to make that calculation and tell them what that is. This resolution establishes that value. So whether you approved the 100% funding or the 70% funding would affect that formula. So we make this calculation now, we give that number to them, they can file for their exemption, that yes, they're going to budget at least that amount. Now, if the Hudson Joint Library does reach an agreement with us and we levy an additional amount, it will not change this rate. The rate will be the same for them. If the Hudson Joint Library dissolves and it becomes the City of Hudson Library only, and those other three members become part of the rural circulation formula, I've made that calculation, the rate would actually decrease. So if you've qualified under this rate, you would qualify under that future rate. So everything should be fine approving this now and then modifying it if one of those other two scenarios happen to occur. other two scenarios happen to occur.
Questions? Supervisor Counter.
Just want to verify if we're the 70% or 100% reimbursement rate.
Yep, so the resolution is written at 100% reimbursement for in-county and 100% reimbursement for out-of-county circulation. The breakdown is $1,061,000 for in-county libraries and $43,000 for out-of-county libraries. That circulation rate is calculated. If you look at this spreadsheet, how we calculate it is we take Baldwin here as an example. They had $238,000 in total operating expenses, and they had circulation. So, they checked out 38,000 items, books, say. There's other things that are circulation. So, they come up with a cost per circulation at $6.17. They know, then, how many people that live in the Village of Baldwin checked out material and how many people outside the Village of Baldwin checked out material. So, outside the Village of Baldwin, it was 14,650 items. So, our 100% circulation is just the cost per circ times everyone that lives outside the village, and the county pays that. The county only levies that tax, then, against everyone who lives outside the Village of Baldwin or outside one of the other qualifying jurisdictions. But that's, that's what's happening here is we're calculating a tax for everyone that's using the library in different ways. The village pays it directly to the library, and we pay it based upon a circulation rate outside.
Questions? Additional discussion? Seeing none, let's do a voice vote on this one as well. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Move on to our fourth business item, resolution regarding the opioid settlement. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Supervisor Austinis, we have a second? Supervisor Hanson, thank you. I'll turn it back over to you, Administrator Witt.
All righty. Let me get caught up in the packet again here. So, the opioid settlement, this is the first settlement that we've reached under the opioid litigation where 71 of the 72 counties in Wisconsin participated in. We reached a class action settlement, and the county is going to be receiving over the next 18 years. I forget. It's 2, 2-point-some million dollars. It's in the notes here somewhere. So, that settlement agreement, there's two parts to it. One is we have the option of securitizing it, which basically means someone will buy the rights to the payment. They'll give us more money upfront, and then they'll collect those payments over the years, and we have that upfront money. It's a pretty hefty cut that they take for that. So, I've recommended against that. And part of it is, the second part of the resolution is, what are we going to do with the money? There's a list of authorized uses. It's included in the packet. I've recommended a position be created in our Behavioral Health Department, which will be a full-time employee that works just out of the jail for mental health. We have a jail medical contract right now that provides for two days per week of mental health services in the jail. We're actually in the process of bidding that out and reevaluating that service. What I'd like to do is pull the mental health out of that contract and supplement it with a full-time employee, which just so happens to correlate fairly well with annual payments. So, I have an 18-year stream for that employee. So, we talked before about the ARPA covering two or three years. I have a grant here that's coming, or not a grant, but a financial revenue stream coming in that would cover 18 years of this position. And, you know, how we solve it 18 years from now, I'm not as concerned about. So, the, the position, though, in the jail is definitely needed. The jail was talking about wanting to do this even before this revenue stream became available. So, this really just makes that a very viable reality, that we have the financial means to move forward and create that position. But that's why securitization doesn't make as much sense for us. Now, the only reason that I would recommend securitization is if the distributors that you have, you don't trust that they're going to stay in business. If they file bankruptcy, those annual payments stop. So, one is, it's basically Johnson &amp; Johnson. It goes by a different name. They're an A-rated bonded company. If they issue bonds, they're an A-rated corporate bond, very stable. They're the smaller of the two. The other one is a distributor. They're a B-rated bond. When they issue bonds, they're a B-rated, which, you know, maybe sounds like that's a lot lower, but a B-rated bond is still, you know, a pretty decent bond. It's not a junk bond. There's actually very few B-rated bond companies, corporations, that go out of business and default. So, I felt comfortable recommending that we continue to take the payments. But I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have on either the securitization part or the use of the opioid settlement monies.
Questions? Supervisor Amber?
So, the total that we'd be receiving is that top line of 18, 1.8 million?
No. Let me, let me blow this up so I can see it. Yeah, it's 2-point-some million dollars. I just, I don't remember the exact number offhand.
I was looking at the resolution. The top paragraph had 1.8, and I was trying to reconcile it in my head.
All right, maybe it is 1.8. Maybe I was thinking it was close to 2, but it's under 2. It's 1.8. I'll trust what I wrote in the resolution. That must be right. East, west, 2 million, 1.8 million. It's all the same.
Other questions?
Stumpkin, night.
Okay, well, we're ready to vote on the resolution. Let's do another voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our fifth item, the Stanton Farmland Heritage Preservation Ag Enterprise Area Petition. Motion by Supervisor Hanson, second. We have a second Supervisor Counter. Supervisor Hanson?
Turn off. Turn off your airplane mode. All right, so, an ag enterprise area is a, offered by state law, DAT cap, and, and Department of Natural Resources kind of pitch in together to offer tax credits for property owners. You have to have five contiguous property owners that get together and petition their political authorities, and that's who we are. We need to approve the petition so that they can get their tax credits. The benefit to the community is that this land is kept in agriculture according to the rules laid forward by DAT cap. The petition is in your packet if you're interested in reading it, and it's, it's a good thing for preserving our agricultural heritage, and it keeps the land an ag. So, it's a good thing. So, please give us a vote on this one.
Questions? Supervisor Counter?
Just want to add on to that, that it's, with that, it's ag enterprise areas that can have any type of agricultural businesses. So, they can have feed, feed mills or other types of production flower, excuse me, raising flower beds. There's, it's pretty unlimited as to what, as long as it stays in the agricultural field.
Questions or comments? Okay, well, seeing none, you're making this job easy for me. We will, ready to vote? Do a voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And on to our last business item, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance in the town of Baldwin. We have a motion Supervisor Hanson, second. Supervisor Van Summeren. Supervisor Hanson, would you like to handle this one?
This is, I'm going to ask John. John, do you mind coming up and just describing this real quick? Because I don't want to, I don't want to miss something.
Yep. Ken, could I have you go to page 82 of the agenda packet? This is a basic rezoning in the town of Baldwin. Rezoning 1.38 acres from commercial, which is part of the Hilltop Inn property, to an adjacent residential property. As typical with all rezonings, these are reviewed by the town boards and ratified by our Community Development Committee, and they recommend approval of request. You can see there are the subject properties in blue, the commercial, the red, the residential. The area highlighted in green would be detached from the commercial and be added to the residential zoning. The two structures you see within the green parcel is a dwelling structure and a detached building. The request is consistent with the future land use plans of the town. And as I mentioned earlier, the town did recommend approval of the request. That's a quick synopsis.
Questions? I'm so sorry. Any questions? Any comments? Okay, well, let's, Supervisor Counter?
I'll just add in, so what's happening for the future of this, if I understood it right from our meeting, was that the area you see in green is going to be added as to be a singular parcel with the area in red that you see. So, that will be more consistent with the R1 requirements for the county. So, that'll all be one large lot, and then the area in blue will be the, minus the green will be the remaining, remaining where the commercial structure is.
Other questions or discussion? All right, let's vote on this one. Voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. That concludes our business items for this evening, amazingly. Let's move on to our annual department reports. Looks like the Highway Department is up first.
I could always talk for an hour about highways, but I think the report speaks for itself. So, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them at this point.
I thought I could sneak in a mouthful. Come on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robbie. Okay, let's move on to our Register of Deeds. Beth?
I'm not going to make mine that short. I don't come see you guys very often, so I might as well get a little bang for my buck. Good evening, everyone. Register of Deeds Department, for 2021, we had a full return to operations as normal. I guess if you could record last year as a normal year, we had 26,213 documents that we recorded. So, in the history of this county, we've only had five years, or actually, yeah, five years where we were above 26,000 documents. And that was in that big housing bubble from 2001 to 2005. For a little comparison, in those peak years, we had some peak real estate prices, inflows of a lot of money into that housing market. We had a bunch of loose lending policies back then where the banks were lending the value of the property, if not above the value of the property on those loans. There was also like a lot of government policies that promoted homeownership back in that 2001 to 2005 area, too. To give you a little comparison, as of today, we have, in 2001, the interest rates were about 6.97%. 2005, they had dropped down to about 5.87%. So, we're kind of, with the new policies of the Federal Reserve, you know, increasing that interest rate, we're kind of getting into that same kind of interest rate policy. So, we have that housing bubble. Our office was about two months behind. We had about four rubber main totes full of documents back in the day, and we would try to accomplish as much as we could, but we were about two months behind. And today, we are usually about 24 hours behind. If somebody's on vacation, we might slip back to about 36 hours or so, but we're usually running about 24 hours behind with that same record number of documents last year. So, 2021 also found the Register of Deeds office to be fully staffed for the first time since about like 2019. So, that was kind of an amazing feat. We hired Jessica Lehman from the Village of North Hudson. She had worked for them previously, and so she kind of completed our staff, and we, she's a wonderful addition to our team. Just the issues and concerns that our office always faces, we always have those threats of cybersecurity. We're always kind of on our toes. You know, we've got documents for, since 19, or since 1848 when we became a state, that we're still trying to protect those images and all that indexing as we put it out there on the web and into the cloud for people to research remotely, as a lot of those industry professionals needed to do during that 20, or during the 2019 COVID outbreak when we were kind of closed down here. So, we kind of kept our economy moving. So, we're always watching for those. We have those new challenges in that real estate market with that increasing Federal Reserve rate again. July of this year, or we had like the lowest number of recordings for this year as a total, lower than any other month in 2020. So, we're going to kind of be watching that, see what happens going forward. We also have some potential, it's called CRIS legislation, confidential record information shielding. What that came from is from the public record, addressing and things like that. A killer found his way to U.S. District Court Judge Esther Salas. He got to her home by finding her address, and when her son opened the door, he was killed. And we think that that, you know, that was out in, I believe, the eastern states, and we think it's not going to come to our local in Wisconsin. But just in 2022, former Juneau County Circuit Court Judge had somebody show up at his door after finding his address in the public record, and he was killed. So, we have this balance that we want to find as this legislation comes forward, and we want to do good and protect our, our judges and the professionals that are putting away the criminals in our areas. But we also, in the Register of Deeds office, take pride in having everything be public records. We're going to have to, the Register of Deeds Association is going to be involved in trying to watch that legislation, legislation and find what's good for the people doing the work in our areas and what is good for the public record. So, we'll kind of continue to watch that legislation going forward. 2022, we've got that slowdown happening. Don't worry, we're not going to be sitting around. We've got things to do in our office. There have been some changes to what happens with marriage records when people become married. They no longer have to turn it into the county where they were married. They actually go to wherever they choose. And we have had quite the influx of marriage records coming into our county. So, a lot more sales of marriage certificates than in the past years. It's just been quite the influx. We're working on planning the space for the new building, taking all of our records with us because we don't throw anything away. We're just going to keep them all. And then, in just recently, Governor Evers awarded the Register of Deeds offices in Wisconsin, Register of Deeds Association, the award for archival information, recognizing Register of Deeds, and the whole association as being one that's really upfront in keeping everything modernized, moving forward in processes, and yet protecting the old data. So, that's what we have going. So, just want to take this time to thank you guys for your continued support of my employees and my office. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Supervisor Amber?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Say, I had an ooh-ah moment when I was going through your, your, your report, and I just can't find it right now, but for the property owners in St. Craig County, there is a protection out there that I thought I read. Could you help me with that a little more?
So, the software that we use, when a document comes in, we index the grantor, the grantee, the buyers, the sellers, the borrowers, the lenders. We index all of that information into our system. We index all of that information into our system. So part of our software package that we always negotiate in is a product called Property Fraud Alert. It's on my website, and what you, what you can do is put your name into the system. It's going to watch your name. So it's not going to keep any fraud from happening to your properties, because once the document comes in and we record it, it is recorded. It's more like a smoke detector that's out there. So the second we're done indexing, within that 24-hour timeframe on every document, you're going to get a notice either by phone call, if that's what you prefer, or by an email, if that's what you prefer. And it's going to say, a document has been recorded in the Register of Deeds office as Document Number 111000. Contact them for further information. So it's kind of like this alert system that lets you know something has happened. So, let's say you pay off your mortgage. You should expect that I'm going to get a satisfaction in my office. You should know it's going to come, right? And if it doesn't come, you should be kind of talking to your bank and saying, how come you're not satisfying my mortgage? How come you're not taking that lien off of there? If you give an easement to the highway department, you sign that document, you should anticipate that something's going to come into our office. So some of those alerts are good things, letting you know that things are happening to your property that you anticipate. If you take out a new mortgage, you should anticipate that mortgage is going to come in. If you sell a little slip-off, you should anticipate it. If you have the same name as 10 other people in our county, it's a good idea to just check and make sure it's not a document for you. It could very well be a legitimate document for somebody else. So, Property Fraud Alert, I recommend you do all sign up, so a good reminder.
Yes, and is that related to foreign entities stealing your property, so now they own it and you don't? I heard something about that.
There are areas where there are a lot of types of fraud, that being one of them. So, people who's, maybe have a secondary home, and you're not up there all the time, somebody might see it as being an empty property, try to research the public record and file false documents, trying to obtain possession of that. So there is, there is fraud out there. We don't, we don't have any known fraud in our area, but just like everything else, you know, the criminals are out there, they're crafty, they're creative, you know. They're, they're going to forge signatures, they're going to forge notaries, they're going to forge legal descriptions, they're going to do what they can to make, you know, good citizens and good people's lives miserable. So anything you can do to protect yourself, protect your property, it's always a good idea to do it. Property Fraud Alert's a good way to, it's a good thing that we can offer our citizens free of charge to watch their properties. And if you have an elderly member too, an elderly parent where you're kind of worried about them in their own home, you're not sure that they're answering the right questions when people are calling and harassing them, put their name in. Have it, have the email come to you, either via text, phone call, or email. And then you can kind of just watch over them a little bit, because again, speed is of the essence. When, when you call, if you call right away when you get that alert, the documents are still here. I mean, if it's a paper one, or it's not very far out our door, and we can kind of chase down who submitted it, where it came from, you know. The faster you get out of your house when there's a fire, the better off you're going to be. The faster you detect your property fraud, the better you're going to be. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Alright.
Oh, you have the last question, sorry.
I would say, we should use our public relations gentleman, Mr. Adam, to maybe put something out there for the public to know exactly where your website is.
Okay.
Because I don't think most people know where to find you.
Yeah, we do put out, like when the tax bills go out, we do like to send notices with all of the townships and the municipalities with their tax bills, but just like when you're getting that tax bill, you're not really happy with the county. Sometimes you don't want to do it then.
We're just looking at the number.
I know.
Yeah.
But thank you. Alright.
Okay, let's move on to Veteran Services. Phil, you have the floor.
I'm going to keep this short as well. Everything that I said pretty much is in the department report. Nothing really new, other than we're doing great, great work through the Veterans Department, and I want to thank my staff, give all of you a thumbs up as well. Thank you for all the support. But, yep, that's pretty much it. Two thumbs up, alright. Thank you.
Questions? Supervisor Adams?
Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion on the Camp Lejeune water situation. To help veterans with that.
Sure, yeah, that's been running on some of the news programs and stuff like that. So VA disability is different than the class action lawsuits. If an individual was in Camp Lejeune from, I believe, 53 to 88, right around there, 89, 88, 89, right there. If you've been there for more than 30 days, you can file a claim for VA disability. And they would deny those roundly for a long time, but they've started to come along with those if you have one of those major disabilities. Nobody wants any of it, you know, that you got the options to get, you don't want those. But if you do have one of those diagnoses, you can get compensated through the VA for disability. Now, the class action lawsuits are completely different. My understanding is that it would not affect your VA benefits. It's an additional class action, similar to like what the 3M lawsuits and things like that, which you might have seen as well for veterans. But, yeah, there is something that's going out on that, but, you know, if somebody has one of those, you know, cancers or one of those disabilities, and they were in Camp Lejeune, they might, if they're going to file a lawsuit and they haven't filed a VA claim, they might want to come into my office and try to file a VA claim too, because it's separate, but.
Other questions? Good, thank you Phil. Okay, do we have any requests for future agenda items? I'm sure we'll be able to fill up the agenda, but let me know if you do have any requests. County clerks report correspondence or zoning requests. Our county clerk is not with us, so I guess we'll skip that one. Announcements, I just, I do have a couple of things that I, that I'd like to talk about briefly. One is the, the exercise and the project that we're going through in terms of reviewing mandatory services, and I'll call it mandatory slash customary services. Thought maybe a little clarification or direction might be helpful. So the, you know, the, the object, or really what we're trying to accomplish is to review all of our services, to get a little better idea of, of how we're adding value to our citizens, and making sure that we're reviewing all those and to make sure that they're consistent with our priorities. So as you go through these on a meeting-by-meeting basis, a lot of times you'll have a nice longer list of mandatory services, and there really won't be anything to discuss. We had that going through Corporation Council and the Admin Committee, and I noticed that on the Community Development, going through the Register of Deeds. So, a lot of the times, they're just going to be mandatory services. But occasionally, you might look at this list of 10 or 15 services, and you might find, nah, maybe there's two, three, or four that might be worth a little deeper dive. Just a little worth, let's discuss this in a little more detail to make sure that we're really adding value, and it's really worthwhile to the citizens of the county. So, you might find one here or there that, gee, this was a really valuable 10, 15 years ago, but the audience has really declined. And, you know, then all of a sudden, the discussion is going to be, well, maybe we should curtail or eliminate that particular program. But on the flip side is also true. You might run into a program that, gee, this has been highly effective, and the discussion really needs to be, you know, how do we increase the funding for this particular program? So, I don't want anyone to, any of our staff in particular, to feel threatened by this exercise, because it's, it's not an exercise to cut programs, it's just an exercise to make sure that we're reviewing our services and that our services are consistent with our priorities. So I really encourage you to take the project seriously. Please do your homework and make sure that you're going through these services. And then, a lot of them, you're not going to need any further discussion on, but, you know, there might be a few that are worthy of a deeper dive and to make sure that we're doing a good job and we're really serving our citizens. So enough on that. The other item is a little more personal in nature. My lovely wife had been trying to plan a family reunion of sorts for a couple of years. She was finally successful at it, and got everything planned prior to last April's election. And of course, she planned our big outing on the first week of September, when, right at the time, we'll be having our September board meeting. So I won't be in attendance, but you'll be very capably served by our Vice Chair Fiedler in my absence. Any other announcements? Supervisor Austinis?
Just one quick one, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to announce to the board, as of yesterday, our Council on Aging and Disabilities Office was open for the first time 14 years ago. And they've, they've done a great job ever since then. So my hat is off to them, and congratulations to that entire staff for a job well done over the years.
Supervisor Burning?
It's National Night Out, so there's people downtown Hudson right now. Law enforcement, EMS, people in the community. So if you can make it down there, get down there. I don't know what other communities are doing that around the county, but strongly, the sheriff, I think, will be there, so.
Thank you. Other announcements? Okay, 5:57, not too bad, we are adjourned.